Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting July 22 at 6:30. I'm hearing feedback from someone. Okay, I guess we're good. Call the meeting to order at 6:31. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order superseding certain provisions of the open meeting law, G L Chapter 30 A Section 18 and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Select will be conducted via both in-person and remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may do so in person. They may also watch or participate in the meeting remotely by finding the meeting at www.southbrowntown.com/remotemeetings. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's board's website at www.southbrowntown.com. In the event that despite best efforts, the public is not able to access the proceedings in real time via those technological means, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So, thank you very much. First order of business is public comment. If anyone would like to offer comment, they can come up to the table here in the center of the room. I let's just double check the participants. Do we have anyone with a hand raised?
No.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. Appreciate that. All right. That being said, I am going to shift the agenda around for just a second. I'm going to bring up from 5A reconsideration of senior IT specialist job description. So, just so the board is aware, I know some of us had watched the meeting. The MTC and Jay had met and talked about the job description. You see the changes in blue that MTC and Jay had agreed to. And Ms. Rosenbloom had a suggestion as well that you'll see on the first page under IT manager. Instead of saying he/she, we changed it to IT manager. So, everyone is in agreement with the job description and the conditions set forth. So, that being said, again, we had already approved the initial job description at our last meeting. So, do we have a motion for the reconsideration of senior IT specialist job description?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Hi, all opposed? Next. All right, thank you very much. Much appreciated today. You are all set with that. Go ahead.
I think it's a two, I think it's a two-step process.
I agree. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that being said, do we have a motion to accept the senior IT specialist job description as amended?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Marty, for that. Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Town Council, Jay Tallaman, demolition delay bylaw. Jay, if you'd like to come up to the center table. Jay, if you, are the instructions still there?
Yes.
All right.
They haven't changed since the last time you were here.
I was screwed up that time.
Sure. All right, great. So, again, welcome, Town Council. It's your first official meeting with the board. Very much appreciate it. I know that you've seen the information that was in the packet. And we'll go down the line with the board with some questions. But one of the things I think would be a good starting point would be some clarity on the, under Procedure 63-3, under G and H in the current code. We seem to have some differences of interpretation whether, and I know you've read the letters and everything. So, it seems to be whether it's a nine-month delay or H, do you have to abide by these in order for the nine months? So, that being said, I'm interested to hear your opinions on that and thoughts on that as we move forward.
So, H actually is not anything in addition, doesn't give any authority beyond the nine months. I view H as really an exception to the nine months that may allow demolition prior to nine months. Where if the commission is satisfied that you're just not going to be able to save it. For whatever reason, then, okay, they'll sign off and the demolition permit could issue earlier. And that's H1. For H2, if they are satisfied that there's been ongoing and continuous efforts, and it does mention a nine-month period, but that, I guess that period could have occurred prior to the process actually getting in the queue before the commission, then they could allow it to go earlier as well. I view H entirely as an exception to the nine-month period. I don't think it can add anything else to it.
Okay, so on this question, I know we as a board had a lot of discussion. Is there? Marty?
On that particular item?
Sure.
No, no, I mean, I think that's, that's, that's been clear for, from the first time, certainly I looked at it. But I think the first time anybody on the board looked at it, it's a pretty straightforward provision. But it's not the way the historical commission's been operating.
That's the way I read it also. Again, the notwithstanding to me, I read that is in spite of that prior section. It's a way to provide additional relief. And I still believe that subsection 2 and H is confusing in terms of the nine-month period. And it seems to me it would be clear if it said something like, you know, no more than nine-month period. So, in fact, if the historical commission can be convinced before nine months of marketing efforts or whatever, that it's appropriate to do the permit. It seems to me that's a flexibility that would make sense here. But again, ultimately, I agree with Mr. Tallaman's reading.
Yeah, and let me add to that. I think the prevailing few out there among attorneys, especially municipal attorneys who are always, have their radar up for a local regulation that could effectuate, say, a temporary taking or some kind of restraint against the use of your own property. We're mindful that nine months even pushes the envelope. And I think that we view similar provisions to this as a means of providing some other mechanism by which, like, we've done everything we can, we've listed it, it's really not that historical, or it's, it can't be saved. Can you let us go a little bit earlier? We gave it the old college try. And I think these provisions are for that purpose, to allow points along that nine-month kind of timeline to provide perhaps something less than that if everyone's done the best they can and they still, they still can't meet it. Certainly, I would be uncomfortable as a municipal attorney who's been on the side of defending against temporary takings claims elongated in any way, shape, or form. These, these types of bylaws kind of make me nervous to begin with in terms of, again, the restraint. I think they're valuable. I think they're an excellent tool for saving historic properties, of which you have many in this community. But they sit on the edge of what we can do as a municipal body in terms of preventing a desirable use of property.
I can just follow up on that. I looked at more demolition delay bylaws for more times than I ever thought I would, never want to. And completely consistent with what you just said, one of the things I found was that, that the provision is, is pretty standard. But it's usually for two or three months. In other words, if somebody, if somebody wants to accelerate the process for being allowed to demolish their property or part of their property, towns provide them with a two- or three-month window that if they try, if they want, if they choose, not are forced to, but if they choose to put it on the market, that, that a presumably reasonable historical commission will look at that effort for two or three months and grant them relief in that shorter period rather than waiting for the nine months to lapse.
That's exactly.
Okay, but to follow up on that, what happened here, and Mr. Purple, correct me if I'm wrong, because you were obviously involved in the process. But nine months ran from the trigger. Or was about to run from the trigger, and the trigger being that the, the property had been declared historically significant, whatever the terminology is. That was about to run, and Mr. Purple identified the fact that the, or maybe it was Ms. Lavoli, it's the building department, identified that that nine months was about to run. And there was a discussion between Ms. Lavoli, Mr. Purple, and myself, I was chair then, about the requirements of the demolition delay bylaw. And a determination was made by Ms. Lavoli, Mr. Purple, and myself, and then Ms. Brascio, you also got involved, that the demolition delay bylaw is a nine-month delay. And once that nine months is up, the rights pass back to the property owner, and they have an absolute right to do what they want with their property. Is that a fair statement?
That's very accurate.
Okay, all right.
Chelsea, did you want to?
Hi, Jay. So, my question's related to the fact sheet.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, sorry. Do you have anything?
No, I think you've got an answer to the question. Mike, I have a related question on another provision of the bylaw.
Second, so I do want to acknowledge we, okay, sorry. I want to acknowledge that we have two members of the historical commission here, and one is in the attendees. So, Annie, I don't know if you, Kevin, have a question on this particular piece. You know, and as we move forward, obviously, you don't have a quorum, you don't have a commission, but you can speak as an individual member at any time that, you know, you want to do that. You're certainly welcome to the table to participate in this conversation. And I thank you for coming. I know that you guys didn't have a quorum, and it is appreciated that you are here. So, I'm going to have you come up here, though. So, Jay, I'm going to have you, if you wouldn't mind scooting for one second. So, is it related to this particular? Perfect, okay. So, if you just want to sit, give your name and your address, of course.
Hello, Annie Pfaff from 50 Oak Hill Road. So, one question I have on the bylaw, specifically H2, that we seem to be getting caught up on a little bit, is defining bona fide and reasonable efforts. And maybe that was already discussed a little bit, but just some clearer definition of what that means. That seems to be something that a lot of our internal discussion on the commission revolves around.
So, I think I can answer that. So, the way I read H2 is because there's a process prior to getting in that nine-month queue that a property owner could be engaged in, there could have been prior discussions with historical or otherwise. The, who decides whether it's bona fide? In that the commission is granting relief from the normal nine-month process. It's really the commission's decision. If the commission is satisfied that someone did everything they could and wants to grant relief, they can and shrink the time. If they choose not to for almost any reason except bad faith or malice or something overt, you know, like that, then that's going to be respected and has to be respected. There's not a legal challenge that you can really make there. And even if you did, the nine months would be gone before you could get into your first meeting with the court anyway. So, I don't even think that's challengeable. That is like a gift that the commission can grant. And if they feel it's bona fide, and I would say that's in the commission's sole and unfettered discretion, then great, then someone gets six months or seven months or two months or whatever. If they don't, because they really like that property to sit out there and maybe someone comes along, a white knight, that's fine. And they're entitled to do that. They don't even have to really act or issue a formal decision. There's no process here really that, to follow in terms of public hearings and input or otherwise. It's totally their call.
But just for clarity, after the nine months?
After the nine months, it's done.
Doesn't matter.
Right. This is along that nine-month, that nine-month timeline.
This is more an opportunity for the commission to work with the homeowner, to try to find, and I know some towns, I've said this before, some towns have done it very successfully, Lexington has, in working with the homeowner and finding someone to purchase and move the home. And it has been done, and I know that there's funds and grants and everything available out there for that as well. But those efforts, if those efforts were made within the nine months, then the relief could be they could release the permit.
And there's, there's fact patterns that all of us could come up with and hypotheticals where someone could present stuff. I've been at this for 10 years. I've been trying to find a buyer. I've listed it on all historical registers. I'm at Wits End. It's my family house. Can you give me a relief? And the commission would say yes. And in the same token, there could be people who just kind of went through the motions and didn't really give, give it the old college try, and the commission might say no. And it's, that's totally within the commission's discretion either way. At any point, again, at any point along the, the nine months that the property's officially locked up.
Okay. Annie, did that answer?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, just to put a finer point on it, the, in addition to looking at more bylaws from towns than I ever wanted to, I went back and I looked at more minutes of meetings of a, of a different body than I ever wanted to. And the, the problem, Annie, was that, that, and you can see it in the documents that we're going to address later, that, I don't know who did it, but someone on the historical commission imported language from the subsection you've identified into a broader requirement. And what they said is that, and you can see it in these materials, that should the, I'm reading from one of them. Should the applicant be unwilling to restore the property? The applicant must prove, that's not true, that he or she has made bona fide efforts to find an alternative buyer before a demolition order will be granted. That's not true. So, basically, the, the, the requirement that Mr. Tallaman has talked about to give relief during the nine months was imported into a requirement that said, we, the historical commission, can deny this altogether. You just don't have the authority to do that. Period.
Thank you, Marty. We have, Mr. Blatsky has his hand raised. He's also a member of the commission. Mr. Blatsky, you're on mute. If you could unmute.
There we are. Thank you. Jim Blatsky, 69 Sears, and I'm part of the historical commission, as you know. I think the disconnect, and this is probably evidenced in how this all occurred.
If you want to go ahead and speak, we can't hear you, but.
I'm not muted. Lisa, can you hear me now? Lisa?
Go ahead, Jim. Try again.
Yes, can you hear me now? No? I'm not showing as muted. Yeah, I'm not showing as muted. I hope you can hear me.
So, other participants can hear him? So, okay. Hold on one second. Jim, we're going to get to you in one second. Just bear with us.
No problem.
All right, Jim, we can hear you.
Can you?
Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to jump in. I think the disconnect is probably between the intent and the actual wording of the delay bylaw. What I, I think the town council is saying is that the Section 63 H and G make the nine-month of putting a home on the market effectively a way to shorten the nine months, but not a requirement to put the house on the market. Am I, am I correct in that interpretation?
Jim?
I'm, I'm not seeing.
Go ahead.
There we are. Tragga. All right. I think, just really a question for clarification, that the disconnect between the rules and guidelines that were written to make it hopefully easier for homeowners, that incorporated that nine-month marketing of a home, reflected, I think what I was told is the original intent of the bylaw. But the unfortunate thing from the commission's point of view is that the bylaw itself cannot require you marketing your home for nine months. And that's, am I correct in that gap assessment? And I'm not hearing what you're saying, Lisa? Or anyone else at the moment?
All right, there we go.
Very good.
Dialogue box. I'm not sure where the, the confusion is with the intent. I certainly wasn't around at the, at the inception of it. To me, this, like all, almost every other demo delay bylaw is just that, a delay. I'm not reading into this any, any different intent than that. I do know that some of the policies and the fact sheets that the commission have adopted appear to borrow from, at least from the breadth of discretion from other statutes which provide the commission with significantly more discretion that they would have if they're, in a case of a historic district where someone was doing work on their house, where the district enjoys a lot more latitude to direct orders and say yea or nay to specific work. I think conflating that, that breadth of discretion to the limited amount of discretion here may be at the root of it. But I really don't, I can't speak to what anyone else's intention was in adopting this. I, I can't view this as anything more than the dozens upon dozens of other communities that have adopted similar provisions.
I hear you. And so, you're saying that it's unusual to require a homeowner to put a home on the market during the nine months or whatever the delay period is, to find out if there's a legitimate buyer willing to pay market value?
All right. I'd say it's not only that would be unusual, but it would likely be illegal.
Can you expand on that a little bit? Because I think that the disconnect in the way the commission's been operating and why those rules and regs were, or guidelines, rather, were published some years back was that the belief, and I was not part of the commission at the time, was that the reason for our delay would be to make sure that if a homeowner's not willing to preserve it, that there'd be somebody else who would. Is that, in your view, an illegal ask of a homeowner?
Under, under this scheme, there is no statute that would support the commission's authority in that regard. And again, I don't think you can compel a homeowner to do anything particularly with respect to their property if they want to change something on their property in terms of a historic district or zoning or otherwise. There are specific statutes that allow that. This local bylaw is just about as far as we can go in terms of kind of impinging on the, the rights of homeowners. In fact, there are provisions in this bylaw that while well-intended, like 63-4, probably not enforceable even a little bit, and wouldn't otherwise affect the rights of the homeowners to just run out the clock. 63-4 being a responsibility, not quite a requirement, but pretty darn close, for the owner of record to facilitate the process during nine months, including requiring access to their property. I wouldn't want to, I, I wouldn't look forward to defending that and getting an injunction against a homeowner to let folks into that house. Let's put it that way.
All right. Well, thank you. So, what I'm, what I'm really trying to suss out is, is it feasible even to consider, and I'm, if I have enough support, but am I correct in hearing you saying that even if the bylaw were to be revised, making a requirement to market a home to make sure that no one else is willing to take it on? Are you saying that, that even if it passed, that type of bylaw would not have a legal standing in court?
I think we'd be opening ourselves up to what we in the business, so to speak, call a regulatory taking. We see that with, sometimes with wetlands regulations or bylaws. I think that the, the reason why we can make a lot of requirements under zoning and even under historic districts is that there's a tried and true statutory scheme that we rely on, and we still see challenges from time to time with that. I would be concerned about the enforceability of an amendment to this bylaw that required a homeowner to market their property, directing someone who bought a property to actually engage in an activity that they're choosing not to that would cost them money. Again, they're not trying to change anything about the home in a historic district. And again, this has nothing to do with historic districts, but, or change something that would require zoning approval where there's some other purpose clause. This is something that is a pure creature of a, of a local bylaw. And I, I'd be concerned that that would be as, probably a step too far. Could we, could we adopt a bylaw provision that had some esoteric or a process that would allow at least some, the ability to consider those things where a homeowner is so willing to do it? I, I think we could, but absolutely requiring me or you or anyone else to put their home on the market in some way, shape, or form, I think would be a step further than what we could get away with under the Massachusetts or federal constitution.
All right, thank you. That was really. Is there, are there any other approaches? And I'll make this the last question. Are there any other approaches to supporting the preservation of historic homes? I.e., is there a historic district, you know, nomination or something that would have to be part of in a geographic zone? In other words, the whole preferentially preserved aspect was that the house is deemed to be of historical interest. Are there any other mechanisms that, that would be legally enforceable?
Well, I think you've mentioned some of them. If, if you created a historic district, then there would be additional protections on the historical resources in that district that, that wouldn't extend to you preventing demolition, but it would extend towards compelling anyone who's going to build in that district to do so in a historically accurate manner. There are, is the matter of putting something on the register and involving certain things that would trigger MEPA review and other NEPA review and other elements of mass historical jurisdiction? Even then, those statutes can only go so far. I've been involved in a lot of renovation of historic structures where we've used those designations as a means by which to slow things down. Ultimately, if someone wants to take down a property like that, it can be difficult to stop them even with that. But yeah, there are those protections. I think you've mentioned some of them already.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. So, I'm just going to ask one more question, and then we can go down, down the board. I don't know, Jay, in the packet, there was a lot of, there was a fact sheet, there was. There was another one-page sheet that Aldo had a pine on as well. And then further back in, there was a two-page sheet, I believe it was towards the end of the packet, that, and it was supplied with, with the letter to the board. It was a two-page demolition delay bylaw, rules and guidelines. It says starts with step one, step two and step three. I know that Town Council on, on that sheet, just again, this wasn't included in the packet, this was a mistake on my part, but he had actually looked at that step one, step two, step three sheet. And he had never seen that. He said, based upon the records, we cannot verify whether they made a response on it. And that document that was furnished dated 2016 are not rules and regulations that would be promulgated under the provisions of the demolition delay bylaw. They're best described as an informational guideline. So just for some perspective and, you know, well, his, the historical commission is here as, as well, was the, the sheet that was attached to the June twenty-three, June twenty-third letter. That was Town Council's thoughts on those. So I guess the, the last piece for me was in, in, for reference, Jay is, there was a letter included in the packet dated August nineteenth to the homeowner. At the particular address that we're kind of talking about, that, that that was actually, it appears a lot of the, the items that are listed in here were actually taken from the three-page fact sheet. So I would be curious, and I think it would be helpful for all of us going forward to, to maybe have an idea of, of what is allowable and what's not. I know in one of, of Attorney Cipriano's opinions, he referenced that providing a copy of a recent real estate mortgage appraisal was not something that could be, it's outside the authority. So I'm just, any, any thoughts you could have on, on maybe the better guidance even that we may give to the, the commission as, as they move forward as to what their authority is or isn't, I guess, based on, on this particular letter that was sent to a particular homeowner? Go ahead, Marty.
And, and maybe Mr. Talan, you're gonna say, no, I'm fine. I, I, I will tell you, having gone through this a lot myself, that's asking an awful lot to go through those particular details. I think it's a good idea for him, I, believe me, I think it's a good idea for you to provide guidance to the historical commission. What I think is more important right now, and I think Andrew, you may have been heading in this direction, is to make it clear that these documents can't be used.
Okay.
And in particular, that the document that's on the current town website has to be taken down immediately because it's got incorrect, again, and I've got another question coming up to you later about the town's potential liability because of some actions taken by the historical commission. But just as a matter, the, there's, there's, throughout these documents, there is, there is incorrect information. There are, quite frankly, illegal statements made by the historical commission. And I think we need to make it clear, I, my preference would be for us to take a vote to have Town Council be the communicator to the historical commission, that they no longer use these documents. And that, that, again, I went back through, I, I couldn't find any evidence that any rules and regulations about these matters had ever been adopted by the historical commission. I don't know where these documents came from. They were not properly, at least in my view, noticed and promulgated the way you would do rules and regulations. It's unclear where they came from, but it's pretty clear that they provide inaccurate, potentially illegal information. And, and my view is we need to get rid of them.
I, I agree with that, but I, I have a question, a broader question that I think can be combined with this is, I think it's helpful not just to the historical commission, but just every board committee that has a bylaw that says you have the, you have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations. What does that mean? I, because I under, you know, at a federal level, there's a process for how you do that. State level there is, but I don't know what the process is at the municipal level. And is it worth maybe even, you know, coming up with some requirements like in a town bylaw that says for a, I know the Z, you know, we, the other night, we approve rules and regulations at the transfer station, right? To just have a central place where at least they have to be filed with the public, Town Clerk's Office made available before a public hearing, things like that. And I know we've now put like three different questions to you at the same time. They're all.
Got it.
I tried to take some questions away from you though.
I will withdraw my question because I, I agree, Marty, it's, it's a much larger discussion.
You know, and there's, there's things I want to talk about and not talk about. I mean, it, I don't want to talk too much about specifics. You know, as an attorney, I want to protect the process. You know, I view it as the historical commission trying to do their best to save historically significant property. So I think that the effort there was entirely good faith at all times. I, I think we, that, that's the baseline we're working with here. Let me go a little bit to what Andrew said because I think it's important. I was actually gonna lead with that in response to, to Lisa's. First of all, in Massachusetts, how different boards adopt regulations is all over the map. It's very different from board to board. The Board of Health has a very specific process. And in turn, their regulations of a board of health are given the authority, even though they don't go through town meeting, as every bit as powerful as.
Not just the South Borough Board of Health, but every board of health.
Every board of health. They're just as powerful as bylaws, even though they don't go through town meeting. And there, there's a process for that. The planning board has different kinds of regulations. Subdivision control regulations have, are a creature of statute and they go through a very specific process. But then they have other more procedural regulations that they could adopt pursuant to zoning or just plan some middle or anything else that are a little bit more kinda informal in nature. They might get, yeah, things like that or what the, what we expect for plan detail coming in. Conservation commissions generally have short bylaws and super, super long regulations. And that can be a problem sometimes because the basic principle, and I want to get to the procedural part of it too, the basic principle of any regulation, again, with the possible exception of Board of Health because their regulations are essentially bylaws, is that the regulations are meant to implement the bylaw and they can't add requirements that are stricter than the bylaw. We run into that all the time with wetlands regulations because towns protect isolated wetlands and buffer zones and things like that through their local wetland regulations, more strict than the state does. And they do that by bylaw, but usually those bylaws are a page or two. But the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions has worked with towns to develop a set of regulations that can be a hundred fifty pages long. And they have different criteria and prohibitions that are, you can't find in bylaws. So we're, we're always constantly kind of peeling back on these a little bit to make sure we don't go further. So even if these could be considered to be regulations, and I don't know, I don't have the specifics as to how they were voted on or not, to the extent they go further and are more strict than what the bylaw allows, they wouldn't be allowed in the first instance under that kind of hierarchy of regulation and governance. On the procedural thing, because we are all over the map, I agree that if you wanted some uniformity that we could count on, you don't have to necessarily have a public hearing requirement all across the board, although some boards, like the Board of Health, does have a public hearing requirement for their regulations. There should be some may perhaps, and not should be, but there could be a bylaw that says all regulations have to be taken at a posted meeting. It could be a, a public, you could make it a public hearing requirement if you want, or at least seven days' notice and have to be filed with the town clerk. Or there should be a public comment period. However you want to design that is fine. Then the, the residents of Southborough would know that regardless of what board it is, historical commission, planning board, zoning board, conservation commission, or even in a more ad hoc board, or your board even, would have a process that they would go through that would provide some uniformity all the way through.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
I'm, I'm, because I looked in vain for a state equivalent of an Administrative Procedures Act. And it was very much in vain. It doesn't exist for promulgating rules and regulations. It doesn't, at least not for, not for cities and towns.
Chapter thirty A is essentially our Administrative Procedure Act, but in terms of what, what we're getting out of chapter thirty A is essentially the open meeting law, not so much the, what you have to go through for hearing and notice.
I'm just wondering, just ha- having been through a decent number of town meetings in Southborough, I'm just wondering if the Board of Selectment for itself and for committees that it appoints could do what you're describing? In other words, so we wouldn't be, we, obviously, we couldn't invade on the purview of the planning board or any other elected board. But, but do you think it would be acceptable from a legal standpoint for the Board of Selectment as a, an initial step to promulgate our own regulations that say for you, boards and committees that are appointed by the Board of Selectment in order for you to adopt rules and regulations, these are the processes you have to follow? Just curious.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're in a little bit of conflicts. I, I think for some of the boards you appoint, I, I think we could potentially do that. For others that have a statutory scheme, which would supersede a, a local policy or rule of a select board, I, I would be, it would be a little bit of a problem. And, and so whatever process you decide, I do want to suggest that you don't want to go to add so much process on the adoption of regulations that it handcuffs the boards. The reason why we like regulatory rulemaking by individual boards is that it's not subject necessarily in every instance to the referendum process that can be town meeting sometimes. We want these boards to rely on their own expertise to develop regulations. We want to give them guideposts and the law gives guideposts. We want to give them guidance too, and certainly as Town Council, that's what we strive to do. But we, we want them to do their job and de- develop regulations within the framework of their bylaws and, and the law. So that, and, and short of like kind of a full town meeting process and short of some kind of other approval process that handcuffs them or requires them to water them, water those regulations down. So we want to protect that process, but to Andrew's point, maybe add a little more uniformity. I think we could very easily craft something, and again, a simple filing requirement or a seven-day notice requirement of a public meeting to adopt regulations would probably give the public at least more notice of what's going on and would allow the town clerk also to develop more of a compendium of what's going on out, out there, for sure.
Lisa, I think another, you know, provision of that that could maybe help is before there's a hearing to, for a commission or a board to create its own rules and regulations to notify the Board of Selectment or mark. And that would just give the board an opportunity to just quickly see, is there something in here that potentially would benefit from having Town Council review it? Because I think a lot of the times, there's gonna be, the, the rules are gonna be so straightforward. They don't need to get a Town Council involved. But I'm thinking about, you know, procedures that if put in place would prevent things like this going forward for, for every board. And I think that's maybe one thing that we could consider.
Great, Andrew. I, I agree.
So I think Jay actually answered most of my questions. I was concerned about kind of the mismatch of the bylaw as it related to the fact sheet in particular. And I didn't know if the fact sheet could be more binding than the bylaw, but you answered that. And I guess just to, to follow up to that, would you suggest that we, in collaboration with historical or historical, comes up with a start from scratch rules and regs? Rather than unpacking kind of all of these documents? Like, I guess, because to move forward, right? Like, we want to make sure that they have the appropriate path, right? And that they, they know exactly how the bylaw ties to the rules and regs. And I understand that there's, you know, been board turnover or commission turnover. And I just want to make sure that they are comfortable with what, what's within their purview to execute on.
So I, I, I think we want to encourage them. Well, first of all, and, and I don't want to get too deep into it, and not because of liability concerns, but I, I don't think we need to rehash too much about the fact sheet. This fact sheet has to go. It has to be rewritten. There's a, there's a number of issues here that if they were suggestions or, or things that someone could do to be helpful, they would be good. But some of the mandates in there are too difficult. And I think we'd be better served by getting into specifics a little bit more offline, perhaps in a conversation that I could have with the, with the historical commission. And I'm happy to, to do that. I love the idea of, so the last document that I have, I don't know if mine is in the same order of the, the, the thing with the arrows, the step one, step two, step three, the frequently asked questions. I love that. So I do think under the bylaw, because the bylaw is short, they have room for regulations. But I also love for the website purpose, a simple one, two, three for homeowners that might have a historical home. Here's what you have to do. Here's what could be helpful. Because that kind of stuff on one page is so valuable to people that are already facing a million decisions with their properties. And we could even have a caveat at the end that, please read the regs too and the bylaw. But I, 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 I really applaud them for trying to develop that. I mean, it's called rules and regulations, even though it's not style, or rules and guidelines, even though it's not really styled that way. So I think the, the, the document itself, the form of it, I, I think is okay. The content of it needs to be reworked into something that's more consistent with the bylaw. And again, I don't mind a regulation that says, here are things that would be amazingly helpful that we could do to help preserve this property if you're willing to cooperate with us on that. That'd be awesome. And I think that's their job. And, and I think they, they know it better than any, anyone else. I just think we have to clean up some of the things that, that are ma- more, more of the mandates. And they exist across the spectrum here. Some of them are kind of mandates, some of them are absolute mandates and some are suggestions. But there's a lot here that has to go.
Lisa?
Go ahead, Sam.
I agree with much of what's been said. I think we've got to redo the regulations piece to make it consistent with the bylaw. I'm also interested in, I think there's an external process and Talan, I like the flow chart idea. It's a good way to communicate with the public. I think there's an internal process and flow chart that we need to clarify as well. I've been following a lot of the historical commission meetings and I think there's been difference of opinion in terms of how the process works on the front end when a building, when an application comes in. It's my personal view that the building department is the one who's best positioned to look at an application, determine is this something that needs to go to the historical commission or not? And checks the, the register of historic properties, which is a finite list, to see if this is something that needs to go down this particular path. And there's been discussion, I, I've heard at least, in terms of who's responsible for that. And I think that we need to clarify that as well internally in terms of what does the building department do? What does, when does the historical commission get involved? And how do those communications work? How does the flow work there, which you could extend the flow chart in the package? But to me, that's another place that is useful to clarify, given what I've seen in the history of this. Going forward, it's useful to get everybody on the same page internally and externally.
And, and I think my only comment on that would be that the guidelines for what the building commissioner does with a request for demolition should be clear, but they should be free of discretion. The, the building department is not set up to make those calls. There, if someone checks a box that tips them, someone into, into a demolition delay, that, that's mechanical. It should be mechanical on the building. And it's not that I don't trust the building commissioners to use their discretion. It's just that process, this process where it's deemed preferably preserved has a discretionary component to it. Having an officer of the town that is tied more to codes and requirements that are more black and white and bright line test is not the place for discretion. So again, if it's over a certain number of years of age or if it happens to exist on a register, that's mechanical, no problem there. Just not, not to make the, not to add another discretionary component because we already have that discretionary component with a board that has some expertise in that. I think that that's where it should lie.
That's what I was suggesting in terms of check the list. Does it apply? If so, go this direction. If it's not on the list, go that direction. I'm not convinced that's been happening. I'm not, you know, I haven't followed it a hundred percent, but my sense is there may have been some confusion around that. And it's useful to clarify that part of the process as well. there may have been some confusion around that. And it's useful to clarify that part of the process as well.
Yeah. So I'm, I just want to go back to the documents. I just want to make, and, and I guess I'll make a motion. And my motion would be that, that, that we have town council continue, complete his review of the three documents that we're aware of. And those documents are identified as there's a, one of them doesn't have a title, but it's got a Q and A. It's a one-page sheet. Jay, do you have that?
I do.
Okay. The second one is entitled Fact Sheet. And that is the three-page document. I believe it's currently, it's still on our website. Um, and the third is the two-page document that Mr. Calloman referred to, which is titled Demolition Delay Bylaw Supp from Massachusetts. To, uh, and maybe you've reviewed them enough to have already made this determination, but advise the historical commission that they cease any use of those documents, number one. And number two, that we instruct the town clerk to remove that, the second document, the two, the three-page document from the website. So that'd be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second discussion? I just, I'd be curious if anybody from the historical commission has any thought to that before we take possession? No? Okay.
Andy, do you need to see what the three sheets we were talking about? Do you want to take a look at them or are you good?
Oh, it was actually in a comment to what someone said earlier. Um, any fast 50 Oak Hill Road. Um, so my, my question about the internal process, I agree that it should be more mechanical, no discretion, um, in, you know, in terms of the, the building department. One thing that we encountered earlier this year is there was a permit that a homeowner applied for a permit as a building permit that included demolition, but didn't check the box that said demolition. And that, you know, opened up a whole, a whole different, you know, bag of worms. So what are the checks and balances in place to make sure that permits are being applied for correctly? So therefore they are interpreted correctly by the building commissioner. And therefore all of the mechanical triggers are in place as appropriate. So I think that's a big thing our process wise. That I think we would need to evaluate before the mechanical, you know, thing could could be, you know, trusted.
Yeah, Mark, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think this is, this is the middle road property where it happened, correct? And, and, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but my understanding is that the building department acknowledged that they, that it was an oversight on their part. So, so, I mean, human error is going to happen, but there was an acknowledgement by the building department that, that, that what, exactly what you described happened. And that, that it should have been caught and wasn't. I'm not sure if we can eliminate human error entirely. I spoke with, with, with the building department about this and, um, I really got the sense that there was that they were upset about the fact that they had, they had missed that. So, um, I'm not sure. I don't know, Mark, if it's, if there have been discussions about an internal check and balance for that. But once that happened, then, then a determination had to be made about whether or not the homeowner could be bound by a mistake that had been made by the building department. Right? Did I get that all right, Mark? Yeah, okay.
I think I'm more thinking, you know, forward looking as we, you know, try to partner as best as we can with, you know, with everyone else in the town. Just how can we prevent that from happening in the future? So that's it. Thank you.
I think that's a reasonable question. If we look at the internal process to see if there are ways that we could actually reinforce that to minimize that chance. But I agree, human error is going to happen unfortunately.
So I, I, I think I'll add two to this and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was discussions when Jay initially came on or before Jay came on, that Mr. Blatsky was going to take part in looking at the permitting system and some changes that we could make to stop some of these human error things from happening. So I think, I mean, obviously we're waiting for Jay to get his, his kind of his, his feet wet and, and you get into town. So I think that's still on the radar and that's still something that we're looking to have done. And I know Mr. Blatsky is here as well, and he has, um, obviously wanted to partake in that process as a member of the historical society. Andrew?
So if that, uh, process is going to go forward, just one thing that's helpful, would be helpful to me is to actual, you know, have some type of a memo with, you know, tabs that shows this is the, if I am someone coming to the building department, I want to apply for a permit and I might be demolishing it. Here, here's the type of forms I'd be fill, I would have to fill out just so I can see them and we can think at a really concrete level about if there's anything you can add to the forms to prevent human error.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. So we still have Marty's, Marty's motion on the table. Any further discussion on that motion? I won't make you read it back, Marty. We, we got it covered. So, uh, I see no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, great. So I, I think we have a, a path. Um, I don't know. I don't have anything else for, um, for town council regarding this issue. I don't know, Marty, is there anything else that you'd like to add or question?
No, I know. I think I, um, you know, on, on relatively short notice, what is this? The, the 22nd? You've been on, you've been on the job for, uh, for three weeks, um, but appreciate the time you put into this and, and very helpful.
And I'll work with, with Mark to, and then with the commission to perhaps schedule a time when I can, however they want to do it. If they want to work on something and send it to me, or they want to meet with me or have me work on something, however that goes, will, between Mark, myself and the commission, we'll figure that out.
Great. And if you find anything through this process as well, that we as a town can better do to maybe help educate the commission, because again, there's turnover on all the commissions, you know, and, and they have a big responsibility. So anything that you think that maybe we as a board could also do, you know, to help further the process and how, further help the, the education. And, um, you know, at the end of the day, the taxpayers are better served and, and we all are as well as volunteers. So we would look for any of that guidance from you as well.
Oh, there we go. One last thing. Um, and had a chance, I think a number of other people did as well as come by and talk with Mr. Calloman yesterday for his first office hours. Um, and maybe, maybe you don't have a schedule yet, but just to let folks, because folks do watch our videos, um, to know that, 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 that there will be, um, a process in town for the, um, for employees, for town departments, et cetera. Um, on a, is it going to be a monthly basis, Jay? Or what, what's your, what's your plan?
We're eyeing the third Wednesday. Now, there'll always be some changes here and there, but we're going to try and have a consistent day. Right now, we've talked about the third Wednesday from 10 to whenever, noon-ish, one-ish, whatever it takes.
Okay, great. So that's something that, that again, I, I suspect at the outset, it's going to be, I mean, again, like for instance, a historical commission could then, and talk about regs that they were thinking about, um, promulgating. But various department heads, boards, commissions, et cetera, can take advantage of those. So, so, um, I think it's a great idea and I'm happy you folks are doing it.
Great. I agree. All right, Jay. Thank you for, for coming today. I think you've given us some, some guidance and some clarity. I know I've gained a lot from the conversation. I'm sure historical has gotten some clarity as well. And, you know, we can move forward and, and put the right steps in place.
Happy to do it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Marty said yesterday as well. Very beneficial.
Happy to do it. We'll talk soon.
All right. That being said, let's go to the consent agenda. Are there any holds as we move forward?
Um, Lisa, I, I guess I'll hold C. So I'll hold C.
Okay. That being said, do we have a motion to reappoint Jamie Mythe to ZBA alternate member term 6/30/22 and approved January 1st, 2022 is implementation date for the meal tax?
Seconded.
All in favor? Great. Thank, thank you, everyone. Uh, so next up, I guess Andrew, you're just going to abstain from? Okay. Yes.
I was going to hold B as well. I had three things that I suggested last time. So.
Would they, do you want to take a second stand and go through them and then?
Yep. On lines 49 and 51, HIPAA is misspelled, H-I-P-A-A, it should be. And line 223, there's an extra D-O, do. Small points, but that's it for me.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry. Can you repeat the second?
Line 223. Extra do.
Okay. Um, that being said, do we have a motion to approve open session minutes, May 10th, 2021 is amended? Abstain? Thank you, Andrew. Uh, go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, it just, I, I know we, we, we touched on it, um, um, at our last meeting, I think it was. Um, but, but the town staff did a very nice job on the, uh, the proclamation. And I know it's in our packet, but not everybody looks at the packet and folks might be looking at the meeting. So it's a proclamation that very nicely done by the Board of Selectment, recognizing August 15, 2021 as India's 75th Independence Day. And it's obviously a very important day for our Indian-American citizens. And I think it's a nice thing that, that we're doing that proclamation. So again, kudos to the, uh, to the town staff for putting that together.
Great. Thank you. We'll actually thank Lori. Lori was the one that, that worked on this.
And with that, I will, it's, it's a, uh, approval and adoption.
All right. All in favor? Great. Thank you. Okay. That takes us down to, uh, 5B, appoint noise by law ad hoc committee. Sorry. Yeah, Andrew, go ahead.
Move to that. Um, may I ask a question about the next steps of the implementation of the meals tax? Just wondering, maybe it's a question for Mark. Now that we've taken this vote, how does that translate to actually starting to get the money in, in January?
Now, see, that's a question I would have expected from Chelsea.
Is this communicated to, uh, restaurants? Do we tell the Department of Revenue of how does it mechanically happen?
So since you so delicately asked the question, um, so the, um, the town clerk communicates with the Department of Revenue and lets them know that here was the vote that was taken, certifies the vote taken by town meeting. The town then provides the Department of Revenue with a list of all the establishments in town that'll be impacted by this change. The Department of Revenue then does the outreach to all of the businesses, letting them know that it is coming and, you know, coming on as of this particular date. And here are the things that you need to do in order to be ready for that. So it's, it's, you know, Afso clerk, you know, does his part. We provide the information to the Department of Revenue on the establishments still affected. And then, and then it's taking, it's, you know, mechanically it's taken care of by the, um, by the state. And I believe if I recall the discussion from, from Ms. Cook, I think, I don't know if it's a quarter, you know, there's a lag before we'll actually see. So I would think probably maybe sometime April, you know, we may start seeing a little bit of revenue. I know we didn't budget anything for this, you know, for fiscal '22, but obviously we'll be adding that into our revenue estimates for '23.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. So, um, appoint noise by law ad hoc committee. So I wanted to, to share some thoughts with the board before we move on with this discussion. Um, I think we're all pretty aware that this is a pretty important committee, that whatever product they forward will have a tremendous impact on the town as a whole. I appreciate very much everybody that stepped forward. It's not always easy to get people to step forward. And we had a, a very, uh, large group that did, and I appreciate that. I know one of the things we had talked about initially in seating the committee was making sure that there was enough diversity as far as, you know, how it, how, um, how restrictive versus how non-restricted it is. Um, I'm really not comfortable at this point that we've checked that box completely. So, and I'm going to share a couple of reasons why. Um, I had made some calls to see obviously if people were interested. And a lot of people that I had spoken to, I made 20, 30 calls. Most people didn't even know that it was happening. So that leads to two issues for me. One being that we have repeatedly spoken on this board on how to reach our citizens more effectively, uh, on the ways that we can do this. And two is that some people reached out to me and were shocked that we were actually interviewing and sitting such an important committee that will have such a large impact during the summer when typically South Row has a mass exodus of people. And some of the people that I did reach out to were not in South Row. So they had no idea that this was, uh, taking, taking place. I just know that this, whatever this committee does, won't be ready for a fall town meeting. Probably. We know how long bylaws take in public hearings. So I would just ask the board to consider, um, putting this back out in September when people are back home, schools are open, there's additional, like Andrew kind of ties into the discussion we had with you last week. So, um, I think there, there's additional ways we can reach out through the schools, through the backpacks. And, and just a lot of other ways. People are back in town. Um, so I just want to make sure again, where it is a bylaw change and we're crafting a committee in the summer. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I'm interested what the board's feedback is. I can say that I'm not comfortable sitting the committee tonight. It's, it's not diverse enough, I think, for, for what I'm looking for. I know, Marty, we talked about buckets and, and I'm just certainly interested to hear what the board says based on that. So we'll just kind of go down the line. Chelsea, we'll start with you.
So I think as I was looking back through what we had drafted for a bylaw, something that popped into my head was that we did not include specificity around this committee holding public forums. And I think after listening to the interviews last week and reflecting on them, I think that that's an important aspect to this because this will go in front of a town meeting where, you know, 100 to 200 people are going to vote for all of the residents of South Row. And I just think I'm concerned that we're, that we're not capturing kind of all aspects of people of the town. Um, and, and so I, I, I don't know if we include that in when we do our appointments or if we actually would look to modify the charge itself to be more, I, I just, I just think that this is one that really needs to take into consideration everyone, because it's going to impact everyone's daily life. And, and I think, you know, I'm of the mindset that we do need something. And I think that we, the, the people who came forward last week all did a really great job interviewing. And I think that they're all passionate about this topic, which is great. And we had a lot of new people come, which I think is even better. Um, so I, I certainly appreciate kind of that. I just am concerned that there were some aspects that would need to go into this bylaw that maybe were, are, are not going to be represented by the committee, um, which is why I think we need, we need to make sure that these public forums occur. So I'm open to feedback on kind of how we do that. Um, so that's kind of my thought. Okay, Marty?
I hadn't thought about that, about the point you raised until just now. Um, I, I trust very much your and Chelsea's instincts. Um, and so if you have a discomfort level, then I have a discomfort level. Um, I'll point out that I'm the one who's I'll point out that I'm the one who said last week, come hell or high water, we'll appoint a committee tonight. So apparently I'm retreating from that. So but if there's discomfort, and I think obviously if we're going to think about doing it in September, it sounds like we would want to do, that that would give us an opportunity at our August meeting to talk about whether or not to amend the committee charge, including, honestly, depending on whether or not there's, you know, what we might include in the membership is is, you know, at least five, but no more than seven, something like that, and have more people on the on the committee if there's a concern that 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 a wide enough spectrum of of interests and and outlooks are not being captured. So I guess that's where I come down. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, I mixed emotions. I did remember your quote last week, Marty.
I remembered it too.
I was ready to charge forward up the hill here. But the, I think Chelsea makes a good suggestion. As I was thinking about what we're going to need at town meeting, I think almost regardless of what input one might get at public forums, I think just having done that creates opportunity for people that is very useful in terms of reinforcing the opportunity for input. So I think that is important. I also, you know, think that it's a very important thing to have a good balance on the committee. And if we could get more people to apply, that would be an interesting conversation. So I had hoped originally that we'd have something by a special town meeting. Clearly, that's not possible at this point. So a little more time seems to me not be not the worst thing in the world. So I would support Lisa's suggestion.
And I'll just add one thing, if I may, to to the point you made about the the public hearings. And I think they're important, but I think one of the things we found with the downtown district is we held forums with the public prior to the planning board public hearings. And I thought those were very helpful and very useful. So, you know, we could, again, anticipate still doing both of those because we know the public hearings are going to be required because it's a zoning change. But again, I think to Chelsea's point with with having these forums in advance, I think we kind of knew where we're at to some level as we went in and where some of the issues might apply. So.
Again, that's important in terms of town meeting. I think given what we've heard so far, there may be some debate around this. Anything we can do to increase the chance that we'll get broader support for town meeting, I think is very useful.
Sam, Andrew?
You know, I also, I remembered what Marty said, so.
So I think people are listening to me. I guess I'll draw some consolation from that.
You know, that makes sense. Here are just a couple of observations I have. That my understanding was that we're basically creating an ad hoc committee to come up with a draft. And then it would show up on the warrant for the town meeting as an article sponsored sponsored by the Board of Select. So that in view of that, if the committee produced a, whatever report they draft by law, they came up with would be a recommendation. And that if there was, you know, we could then tweak or modify the draft that the ad hoc committee came up with. So I think it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to find the kind of perfect balance in this committee that we're we're looking for. So I think, you know, the concern is that, you know, the that the the ad hoc committee is too restrictive, we're not restrictive enough, the Board of Select would be the ultimately the board that could correct any or change a draft. Another thing I think is, you know, one of the most important parts about the committee charge isn't so much the drafting the terms of it as just getting some information about, I'd be interested in learning about what are other surrounding communities do, what their town bylaws are like. I know Mr. Lapine, you know, when in his presentation about his draft, he had already done some of that research. I'm looking at some getting, you know, more of that research. So I think that kind of work can, you know, can start on the earlier side. So those are my thoughts.
So so I also had another thought. And I and I agree with you that that this is an article that the Board of Select would bring, but I'm looking for this committee to kind of have done all the vetting and explain, like have the backup as to like why part one is like this, why part two is like this, so that they've done all the legwork and the research. And hopefully, you know, it's 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 a good representation that would satisfy the majority of people in town. But the other the other thought that I had is it seemed like, and you can correct me if I'm off base here, it seemed like at town meeting that ours were almost the most simplistic way to look at this, right? Like at a minimum, I think people were all kind of on the same page as if we if we were to pick one thing, we can probably get consensus around ours. And I think where this is going to be probably, hopefully, we'll have a March town meeting. But if we can, at a minimum, put in some minimum hours as part of a bylaw change for fall town meeting, and at least get something in place to alleviate some of the, you know, six AM issues that are existing today, I think we could potentially alleviate some of that in the short term because I understand that, you know, parties like Mr. Lapine have done a lot of legwork on this. And, you know, I don't want to I I don't want to give the impression that we're just pushing this off till the next town meeting. Like I I am taking this very seriously that, you know, we want to come up with something that works for everyone. But I also understand that, you know, people who are living through this on a daily day to day basis, it's it can be impactful to them. So.
Yeah, the last, I guess, the because of Mr. Ash Ash sitting here, who who's here for the second evening in a row. And I guess in my view, I guess there's two ways to look at the 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 question of is the is the representation broad enough? I actually thought from the from the six people we spoke with last week that there was a decent representation. However, the perception of whether or not there's sufficient, you know, a spectrum of representation is at least as important because, again, the object is to come up with a good bylaw and to get that bylaw passed. And for instance, if we ended up with five of the six people who we are considering right now, I'd actually be fine with that. But if in order to do that, it's important to play through a process that gives the community comfort that it wasn't done in a rush. It wasn't done when folks weren't available to weigh in. I think that's really important. So I guess that's a that's a long way of saying, Mr. Hash Ash, that there's a pretty good chance you still end up on the on the noise by law committee. Because again, I was impressed with everybody we spoke with last week, but it really is important that the perception matches the reality. And so I think not rushing it is important.
Yeah, and one second, Jake. And I will add, Marty, I mean, again, I think I said it, I thought we were fortunate to have as many people step forward as we did, you know. And I think for me, the diversity was close. And I agree with you that some some very good people stepped forward and we were very fortunate. Again, for me, it just came down to the combination of the two things. I mean, I I struggled with trying to 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 sit somebody tonight, knowing some of the conversations I had. So so, Jake, if you want to come up to the, and again, thank you for being here again. We appreciate.
In in the lobby after the meeting, we actually, the five of us who stayed, it was Peter, me, and one woman left immediately, but the rest of us, we stayed, we we came to general agreements about the things we wanted to implement. And I was just thinking as a team of five, we would have done a a very concise and not fast, not like, you know, shoddily done, but something that could potentially cover all the residents of Southborough and make sure that nobody has their rights infringed and that nobody has to deal with six AM lawn mowers or et cetera. But again, this is just anecdotal at this point.
Well, I don't want you to feel defeated in any way because that that's not the case here. I think, you know, we we deal with bylaws all the time. Bylaws take time to create. It takes time to educate the public on them. And so I don't think there's a rush for any of us to get anything done because we want to do what's right and we want the public feedback. And and your committee will want that as well, you know. And again, just just to for transparency purposes, to to make sure that everyone had an opportunity that that may be gone for the summer, be out of town, because a lot of people do. That was my concern. And that was some of the feedback I had heard. It was no reflection of any way of the job that, you know, any of you that came forward would do. It's not a reflection in any way.
Mr. Lapine also told me something that a very long time ago, he had submitted a noise ordinance again, and then it got postponed until twenty twenty, and then COVID happened, and it got postponed until now. This has been going for three years now? We've been looking at implementing a noise bylaw?
So that was a citizen's petition. That's different than creating a committee that, you know, is a town formed committee that looks at kind of everybody in the town, like like Ms. Malonowski said about a forum, you know, it takes into account all of the citizens have an opportunity for feedback. So it's a little bit different than a citizen's petition. Anybody can bring a citizen's petition forward. And again, kudos to Mr. Lapine because he started the conversation, you know. Again, I don't think anybody faults him for that in any way. He started a conversation that I think many of us needed to see spearheaded, you know. So but but just for clarity, it wasn't officially a town.
The only other thing I'm wondering is don't these noise complaints mainly affect people during the spring, summer, and fall?
I'm not going to answer that because, again, that's that's the police department. We don't have those reports in front of us. So I generally, I can't say that. I think it's, you know, again, as someone that lived with construction next to them for three years, I certainly understand the need. I mean, there was garbage trucks coming at four thirty every Friday morning, you know. So we all understand that, you know, we all understand that. But but I think the for me, it's important for the committee to find the balance within the community. And and I think that that, again, we've had good people step forward to try to find that. So Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, I will move that we table further discussion of appointment of the noise by law ad hoc committee with the idea of taking up at taking it up at our first meeting in September, come hell or high water.
And we'll review the charge at our eight seventeen meeting.
That's the chair's call, so.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? And again, I'm not aware of the conversations that took place. So I can't I can't speak for why they didn't attend. So again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we'll see you in September. Yes, Sam, go ahead.
I would point out for historical accuracy, I actually had a run at this in two thousand fifteen. I've been at this for quite a while. Thanks.
Completely leave the topic. My own, you know, instinct view was I'm not entirely clear that that a noise by law is would be considered a zoning article that would have to go through the planning board and be subjected to your rule. It might not. I think of it more as a health and safety ordinance that does.
Then if it is general, then it's more important than ever that we add the.
Something we should know and maybe get asked Jay's opinion on.
Mr. Purple thinks it's general as well. I stand corrected. So, okay, that's great. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, next up, downtown district by law update, just a quick update. I know many members were in attendance at the meeting. It was a good public hearing on the downtown district. And again, I know some of the members watched, so I'll keep this kind of brief. It was a good turnout. There was many downtown residents in attendance. When speaking initially on the map, I had shared the board's position that we had prior discussed not entertaining expanding the current map that was there. Residents from fifteen and eighteen Main Street would like to see it expanded to incorporate their properties. Resident at ten Main Street was against it because you're talking historic homes. Mr. Hokinson also gave a brief history of one eleven Main Street was approved and how it had gone through the court process. He kind of gave us an update on that as well and some of the compromises that were made. The thing that carried most of the discussion was the map itself. Mr. Miller, who's actually here tonight, had came up with a suggestion on possibly leaving Lata Squam and Park Street properties in either a new district or potentially even leaving it in the Business Village District, which would afford them the same rights that they have today, but not allow the mixed use component. Chairman Morris believed that there is a path in working forward with this. He discussed having a joint meeting with Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and EDC to create a much needed path forward. So again, most of the discussion during that time was focused on the map. There wasn't much discussion on the document itself. I had updated the planning board of the changes that we had made, the three changes on the two thousand, three thousand, the height and the FAR. At the end of the meeting, why the board had received a copy of some questions and emails was Ms. Latrell had referenced some changes that Ms. Conley had talked about at the EDC meeting, the prior EDC meeting, and she just she wanted to see what the changes were. They were obviously the questions I had shared with the board as well. I had spoken to the town planner. I made clear to her that, you know, the the board took a vote, and part of the public hearing process is to hear about questions, concerns, and possible changes that may need to be made. So that when EDC, I know Ms. Conley didn't share with the EDC what those items were, but I think the public hearing process, and I shared that with the town planner, I think that's the appropriate place for discussion on those items during the process. I, again, that's just an update. The board may feel differently about that. But I think that's the the proper avenue to pursue this. Again, we've started the process. So and that being said, yeah, I just said that changes the board. And obviously, we have the opportunity through the public hearing process to take the feedback that's given, that the discussions that are taken with planning board, and we can make changes as need be. We talked about doing that. That was one of the reasons for delaying town meeting, was being able to make less amendments if needed be on town meeting floor. So that's just a heads up because that question had came up during the meeting, and I just wanted the board to be aware. So I don't know. I know other members were there. I don't know if I missed anything or they'd like to add something to that. Feel free. I know, Sam, you and I believe Andrew were there. If I missed something, go ahead, Sam.
One quick comment. You mentioned the EDC suggestions. I actually listened to that meeting, and I think they do have some things that actually could make it more buildable, if you will, in terms of some of the details in the current draft. So I'm hoping they will provide that to the planning board and others as we go forward, because I think there are opportunities to make tweaks to and improve the likelihood that people will want to build as we hope down.
And I will add that planning board does, because I know Ms. Conley's on vacation, they had requested, and we had supplied them because, again, they were discussed in a public forum, so to some level. So planning board does have, so that they'll know going in to the public hearings and the next EDC meets, they can, you know, take their positions. Or Ms. Conley, as certainly as a citizen, can is individual member of the EDC can go and share her concerns as well. So Andrew, did you have, did I miss anything?
No, I just, I agree with your first observation, and I thought it was a good meeting. I thought that progress, I have the feeling that progress was being made. It makes me more optimistic at the chance of ultimately presenting a bylaw that will be endorsed by both the Board of Selectmen and the planning board. It's been a long road, and I feel like we're getting closer. And I look forward to the meetings that I think Mr. Morris said would be in September, right? Although I think he really suggested that some of the more meatier discussions would be in September when people came back from vacation. Yeah.
Okay. Of course, you know, but I think there's there's some paths, again, Mr. Miller's here, and and I think there's some some clear opportunities and paths forward with. We get to the goal setting. I'm going to move up the last public comment. I know Mr. Perry has something he'd like to share, and he's been sitting here. And so he doesn't have to sit through our goal setting. So David, welcome. David, welcome. Again, it's nice to see you. Yep, sit there. Vanessa will show you. And so any public comment, this is the time. If you're watching in the uh, from the meeting, just raise your hand and we will acknowledge you as well. But Mr. Perry, you are welcome to speak, sir.
This isn't about telephone call. Um, what do I have to do?
So Vanessa, you're all set.
I'm all set? Okay, my name is David, David Perry. I live at twenty-two Main Street, Southborough. And I have a brief statement here because of, because of what happened. You, you gave a very thorough um, summary of what happened on Monday night, which I wasn't, I didn't attend, but I did later watch it on YouTube. And I thought it was very, some very significant and very worrying, in my opinion, issues are coming up here, which I think are going to cause huge problems for your downtown zoning. Because let's be clear, you are the official sponsor and the planning board is conducting hearings on your plan. And as Lisa said, um, you know, some, this is a big problem coming here, which I think could have threatened the approval of the downtown zoning. This is because some owners of the residential property along Main west of downtown now request that their lots be included in the downtown zone. They want to allow commercial uses on their lots, which are now zoned residential. Some of you may recall in the nineteen eighties, this same issue arose, causing, causing a storm of protests at the ZBA end of town meeting. Call, it was called a creeping commercialism. A lawsuit was filed appealing the ZBA's decision, which was finally resolved at the State Court of Appeals, two levels up from a local court. And as a result, no commercial uses were allowed to spread westward onto residential lots. Also, as a result, every town plan, master plan since then has included the goal of preserving the historic residential character of Main Street west of downtown. So why is this happening again now? Now, I was watching this thing event, you know, because it's brand new, this thing. It happened on four days ago. It's like dominoes. First, one owner of one residential lot on the north side of Main Street asked to be in the commercial zone. Then another one who knew about that in advance is on the south side, requests to be in the downtown zone. Then another resident suggested that the commercial zone be extended to include all lots, north and south, all the way to eighty-five, even to Fay School and, and the townhouse. All these suggestions are now being mapped, officially mapped by the town planner, and they're going to be presented at the next planning board meeting, hearing on August sixteenth. So you can just anticipate what's going to happen. In other words, exacerbating what's happening right now. It's a domino effect. First one homeowner, then another makes a request to profit individually from the commercial zoning at the expense of others, at the expense of the neighborhood. Because allowing new commercial uses on these two residential lots will inevitably make all residential lots vulnerable. And it will reduce residential property values west of downtown. This is just starting to pit neighbor against neighbor. You know, how bad to get involved here? I don't want to get involved, but I sure as heck am if I have to. Because I'm not going to go through with having the downtown, our, our residential neighborhood threatened by your downtown zoning, which is about to happen, I think. You're going to pit neighbor against neighbor here. What can stop this? And I thought about this today quite some length, you know, what is a way to head off what is happening here? I think there is a way for you to, to head this off. Because if I think the problem has, has happened here is that you, the Board of Selectmen, who are the, who are the sponsors, the official sponsor, have not made your opinion clear as to what should happen outside the downtown district zone, particularly west of the downtown district zone along Main Street, where these particular issues are, are coming up, bubbling up. So I think a way for you to handle this, I suspect we suggest this, is for you to make clear to the planning board so they know where, what your opinion is on this particular issue. Make clear to them that you agree, I've got some wording here down at the bottom here, letter to the planning board, official letter to the planning board, making clear your support for preserving the historic residential character of Main Street west of downtown and further that the Board of Selectmen does not support the expansion of the proposed downtown zone to the west of the existing downtown boundary of the zoning map. That is the only way I can think of of avoiding what's coming down the pipe right now. Because I have been called by two neighbors wanting me to get involved. So I just put that to you. It's this issue, it's this map issue, you know, this map issue. So anyway, I just thought about this today and I thought, you know, you're having a meeting tonight, August sixteenth coming up. I just anticipate a storm of protest. It's all going to bubble over. People aren't going to forget it. They're going to see it as a threat. My side.
Thank you.
Be helpful.
David, thank you. And I think um, one of, one of the things the, this board had taken a position on as we were looking at the downtown initiative and we looked at the map was we had taken a position to not expand, and please, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, but our position was fairly clear that we're not looking to expand. So through the public hearings, just, you know, that is the opportunity, as you know, for, for the public to have their say and their input. It doesn't mean that that map is going to change because one member or um, another member, you know, may have felt a different way. It's, it's all about everybody having a voice in the process. And um, again, I don't think, we haven't discussed changing our position in any way, but I think our position was clear and I had mentioned that at, at the update at the start, you know, of the, of the public hearing that again, that this board had taken a position that we did not have an interest in expanding the map. And again, as this process continues, we may discuss it again at some point, but a- as it stands today, David, I, I, I can speak to you as one member of the board. I don't have any, um, I personally don't have any in, intentions of, of expanding that map. I think um, there was a lot of good comments at the meeting and I thought there was a lot of good discussion about it and I respect everybody uh, as, as homeowners on Main Street and um, I guess I'll just leave it at that as it's, it's your opportunity and public comment, but, but thank you. Uh, we appreciate your voice being heard. I don't know if you need to come out of retirement just yet. Um, but as always, it was a, a pleasure for you to come and it was a pleasure for us to see you and know that you were heard. So David, I, I did at the start of, you know, when I spoke and gave the update of, of the draft that we had given to the board and that the four changes that had made, one included the map. Um, again, it's, it's, it's a public hearing process and, and everyone has a, has a right to speak and the board will consider if there's any adjustments or anything that we want to make. And I don't think that, that particular issue, you know, is, is for consideration tonight or, you know, um, or whether or not it will be in the future. Obviously, we'll, we'll take into consideration everything that's said. So. There you go.
Um, if I can, Lisa, I understand where you're coming from. I mean, what you're saying is what you said all along. This is, um, council, that we have, we don't propose any changes to the map, period. But that doesn't say, you know, the missing language here. It doesn't say why in particular, you know, to, uh, the issues along residential, well, you know, Main Street west of downtown, where it's in the town master plan to be preserved as a historic residential character. You don't say that. So, so that issue is completely fine. I mean, is, what, what do you want to happen? You want me to get to the planning board and say these things? It's just, it's much more effective if you do it, then you can make your position clear on that issue on West Main Street. Otherwise, it's just, it's a step and end it. We're not proposing any changes to the map in a north, south, east and west. You, you see what I mean? North, south, east or west, once this is this way. But this issue is this, you know, way to down, you know, it's, it's just starting. Got two homeowners, three homeowners all the way to eighty-five, you know, that people are mentioning, well, you know, the, the funeral home is another business, um, you know, you know, I mean, you see what I mean? It's going, I just say it's going to spread and spread. People are just going to get upset. I'm trying to think of a way to pit it off. I don't think it's sufficient to say that we're not proposing any changes to the map. That's like a sort of, you know, it's like a, almost like a non-statement. It's do, do you understand where I'm getting at, your thinking?
Right. David, David, thank you. And you certainly can talk to um, um, planning board. I would be happy to share the statement that you just gave us with planning board as well. You know, so they have that in advance. Um, Marty, I you look like you wanted to add something, so.
Oh, I was playing with my mute button, but I think I'm going to, I, I think I'll be quiet. I think, I think you've, I think you've covered the terrain.
Hey, David, thank you very much. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, great. That being said, next item is the goals. Just pull that up. I thought um, one of the things I thought was, would be, would, is very productive and Marty, thank you for continuing to update this list and kind of keep it going is it's, it's nice to see what's in progress and some of the recent steps and to see what's been completed. So I think it, it proves that this process was effective. Uh, it was a long way to get here, I mean, two very long meetings. Um, so I would, um, the only thing I would say, Marty, is under completed, pursue bike friendly policies and exploring the bike committee. That was as completed. I didn't think that that was completed.
No, I probably just tend to make myself feel better.
Okay, so we're going to check it back to in progress.
The emphasis on it was on explore, because I did talk to Catherine about that.
Okay, so um, I think a good starting point is in looking at what's in progress and recent steps. There is nothing on there that I particularly would like to see taken off. Go ahead, Chelsea.
So as I was reviewing this, um, the only, the only one that I am struggling with a little bit on leaving on, because I think it may be more of a, keep a pulse on it and you, because you just don't know when the right partner is going to come up, is on regional dispatch. So I'm okay with taking that one off, but I would like to have Chief Paulson to talk, Chief of Policy and Chief Achilles to come in to talk about it uh, about kind of what's going on in the region, um, given, you know, I think there's been a lot of things changing with kind of the landscape and um, as we're um, kind of, I'll say recovering from COVID. But, but that one, I think I'm okay with taking, with taking it off, but I think we need to um, have them in to discuss it and maybe it eventually goes back on, but I think for, for now with I, I just don't know what's going to happen with that one.
So if I can just add, so one of the things I had planned on doing was quarterly having Chief Achilles, Chief Paulus and Karen Gallagher come in and just kind of give us some updates. So I had actually, uh, when Town Council was here, happened to run into um, Chief Achilles and said, hey, I'm your liaison. Can we, you know, he said, great, can we talk? So I had mentioned to him, I'd like for him to come in in September and just give us a, an overview update of some of the things that are going on. I know he wanted to talk about accreditation, among other things, so I think is that the avenue potentially, Chelsea, that would work for you in having those discussed?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. I, I mean, I also think we can take the completed ones off of here, if everybody's okay with that, um, because now we're going into FY twenty-two.
Yep.
Um, and I had a specific question for Sam, if I can, one of them. So Sam, on the um, the town water, what for Pine Hill? Are you, are you still wanting to leave that on kind of with the approval of the tanker tender? Um, from a municipal water perspective and not necessarily from a fire perspective?
No, actually, I've not been interested for municipal water. I don't think there's much support on that road for municipal water as people have wells. I guess I still believe it's useful from a uh, uh, fire protection standpoint. And the tender, I think is very helpful certainly, but again, the tender is now about two or three thousand gallons or something like that. So for, you know, a larger fire, having the hydrant system there, I think makes sense. And I think that also will have an impact on a property insurance rates, I'm told. I don't know how much, but uh, I think that's worth continuing to consider, I guess. I think there are, there are funds available from various sources for building out water infrastructure. So that may be something we could fund through, you know, non-tax base kinds of issues. I have talked to the MWR about that one and they are not involved in that process. So I said that if we can work out something with Framingham or Marlboro to hook into the MWR water, they don't have uh, any uh, interest in participating in that process. So it's more or less in our hands locally, uh, which seems to me to still be a worthwhile thing to do, so.
So Sam, would it be useful to update it to um, some like Pine Hill Road with water, town water regarding fires?
I thought we had firefighting on, on there at one point, but maybe.
Okay. Want to put Framingham on there because you just said WR was not involved in it, maybe just again, for clarity going forward?
Yeah. And while we're at it, Lisa, I would also suggest the forty B thing uh, on the file list. I don't see that that's completed, I guess. I think there's still some important things that we need to be doing with that one, actually. So I'm not sure why it was completed.
Okay, I think that was probably an error because it's still listed in the in process column as well. So we can just uncheck that. Same, thank you.
On the um, are you okay with us just?
No, keep going, continue.
Okay, um, on the televised one, so the fourth one under boards and committees, um, I think maybe we should update that to encourage and provide support for hybrid meetings or uh, public access to meet or something like that, um, because I think we're getting there. Um, and we're close, but I think we probably have a few more steps to do on, on that one.
Lisa, can I make a suggestion since this is the chart that I put together? Um, this is the last one I did in May. Um, and for instance, the, you know, it was, it was, it was put together with fiscal year twenty-one in mind. Um, and the completed was done with fiscal year twenty-one in mind. And so that's why, for instance, with the pursuit policies and projects for forty B threshold, we did that. I mean, it's an ongoing process, uh, but that's why it was listed as, as, yeah, it is both in process, but we did um, from a, from a goal standpoint, it's something we addressed in fiscal year twenty-one. So that's the balance I was trying to reach in, in the Xs. So I'm, I'm happy to go through this list and um, maybe for our meeting in August, independent of new stuff, just go through and um, um, revise it with that sort of mindset. Um, so exactly what you're saying, Chelsea. Yeah, since it's a number of these, you know, um, yes, we, um, you know, uh, it's completed that we conduct public comment at the beginning and of, of each meeting. I'd like to keep that on there though. As a goal, we want to continue to carry through. So I, I'm happy to go through with that. Again, this is simply the, the May twenty-one goal. It's the last one I did. I'm happy to go through and update it with that, with, with, okay, now we're going into fiscal year twenty-two. Which ones stay, which ones go?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right, I'm happy to do that. Makes sense with you guys?
I'm good with that.
All right. And I'll take out, the emphasis will be on taking on anything that Mr. Styris was supporting.
Just have a follow-up on one of them for uh, Mr. Purple, on the budget um, software implementation. And this is more for not, not for what Marty, Marty just talked about with um, FY twenty-one, but for FY twenty-two. Do we know what, how we're going to do the budget and um, what software we're going to use for FY twenty-two? FY twenty-three during FY twenty-two?
Yeah, we do not.
Okay.
No, so we, um, so again, the um, the, the, the vendor that we chose, the product really didn't work the way we wanted to. It made things more cumbersome. Um, I think the only silver lining out of that is we ended up getting a budget module. Uh, I'm sorry, a capital budget module that's going to work for us. Um, we do have uh, an existing um, a budget module on our current financial software that really has never been used. So um, I'd like to dust that off, do some work with that um, and get some demos from the vendor to kind of understand. Can, is this better than, you know, I mean, look, I, I don't want to go back to the Excel sheets, but I trust the Excel sheets at least. It was a better process and I, I felt a lot more comfortable in, in. It was a better process and I I felt a lot more comfortable in 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 defending pieces of the budget than I did with what we had. So, um, that's a long answer to say no, um, but we'll work on that.
Okay.
So is it fair when Marty does this review of kind of memorializing FY twenty-one and then what should kind of reset for FY twenty-two? Is it fair to say we should keep some sort of, um, budget software goal or keep it open so that? Or, yeah, okay.
And Chelsea, with that in mind, what I'll do is I'll be, I'll say, I'll get this to Mark. I can do this pretty quickly. I'll get it to you. We do certainly within the next week, and then you can send it out to people, see if they agree with this. This is off, this is on, et cetera. Okay?
All right, was that it, Chelsea? Okay, Marty, is there anything you have to say about anything additional that you'd like to see taken off or kept on specific? Sam?
Uh, no, I think Marty's proposal is a good one, and I'll be prepared to restore everything we.
I know that you didn't take part in the fiscal year twenty-one discussion. Um, I'm sure you had an opportunity to review it. I mean, we certainly can have larger discussion on it when it's kind of updated, but, um, is there anything you you see specifically that you might want taken off?
No, you know, I'm not really went into the list because I was present at the creation, but, you know, I thought of this exercise more as thinking about what are really big picture, you know, goals for this coming year, and I think it's, I think it's better to have a smaller set of lists rather than a longer set of lists in that regard. And I mean, for me, definitely, I think that Chelsea's number one, um, goal, uh, plan for ARPA, I mean, I think that's also what I think is a top goal, but after first completing some of the other really important things which are already in process, like, uh, the downtown initiative.
So if I can just add, Andrew, so we kind of, when Marty created this list after our last meeting, people were assigned like certain things. I know, like, for instance, I know Sam and I, we're gonna work on the employee handbook, but we were waiting for the policies. Chelsea and I started that process. We just haven't finished it yet. So, um, as far as this list, and I I understand you may want to look at prioritizing things a little bit, but in the sake of just kind of moving forward with what we have in front of us now, we certainly could go through and prioritize it. But if you look at what got done, it was a a fairly good amount of items, and I I would hate to shortfall some of these things that I still think are important. Um, you know, from from last year when they were on there, that, uh, again, I think are important to complete. Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it was interesting, Andrew, when, when, again, there was no magic to the list. It was, it was, uh, you know, um, it was our only in-person meeting last summer. Um, you know, we were seventy-five feet apart trying to communicate with each other and, um, but when, but when it got put together, it was interesting because, um, there was something like as simple as the public comment at both the beginning and the end. Now, that's something we talked about. We all thought it was a very good idea, and it was kind of nice to be able to go through for the next meeting and say, you know what? We've done something, you know, we said we were gonna do something and we did it. And I agree with you, the 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 longer term stuff is 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 important to think about, and it's farther out on the horizon. But, you know, being able to look and say, you know what, we said we were gonna, you know, reinforce our concern about open meeting stuff and everything like that. We haven't done it yet. Let's get it done. Um, and so I I actually found it very helpful that there were small things as well as medium sized things that we could just remind ourselves that, you know what, we said we were gonna do that during the fiscal year, and darn, we did it. So or or haven't yet. So anyway, that's a long answer. But.
Go ahead, Sam.
Um, reinforcing Marty's comment, I think from a process standpoint, what I see is the opportunity to go through, as we've talked about here, and remove things that are done now. Keep things on that are still in process and then have a discussion about other things that we might want to add to come up with a a list that is generally similar to what we had previously, that gives us opportunity to accomplish short term things, start some intermediate term and some longer term things that are important here. And sort of keep us on track, if you will, on several levels as we go forward. So I think we've got a good structure. We're now in the process of editing some, which I think will be productive, and then we'll move forward this way.
Sorry. Yeah, Sam, I agree, and and like the next step is we're gonna give everybody the opportunity to go through, um, some of the goals that they put on their list. And, you know, similar to what we had done before, you know, I think the board, pretty much just about everything that was discussed at our last goal setting meeting ended up on the list. I think the board was very supportive of that, so, um, I'll put my stuff last, which is totally fine. So if just kind of going down the list we have, Marty, if you want to talk through your points.
Um, sure, and this, the the my first one showed up on some other people's lists as well, and that is sort of a, I think it's, 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 I think everybody agrees that there's gonna be follow up on what we heard from the ADA consulting board last week. You know, the, the, the second one is talk about long term, Andrew. Um, and I actually, I, you know, it's, 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 even if we just end up having the discussion, but may, hopefully, the discussion would lead somewhere. The discussion at, you know, may maybe one of our, um, you know, meetings in the fall about whether or not to put together um, a, a committee to start talking about, you know, um, are there identifiable locations for a senior center, community center? Because as long as it remains sort of, you know, in the ether, um, there's no chance that it ever becomes real. Um, and and, uh, you know, again, you know, Mr. Styris has talked, um, uh, a lot about about the, uh, the money that's coming down the pike for infrastructure and, um, you know, all sorts of other things from the federal government. I think there's gonna be an opportunity there for for South Row, you know, it doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but an opportunity to 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 structure a proposal that taps into that money um, for the, uh, for a, uh, you know, a senior center and a community center. And I will tell you that that, um, I think one of the real benefits of of the very civil, um, productive discussions that I had with the folks from St. Mark's and Fay, and Mark, I think you were there at the meeting where I raised the possibility is, how would you all view the possibility of some sort of partnership with a community center, you know, that would be tied in with a senior center and the like, and their eyes lit up? Um, and I can't remember who it was, it might have been Ms. Cook from the advisory, who talked about fact, the fact that there are, um, you know, there, that there are are wealthy, um, business interests in South Row who might look at that as a real opportunity to contribute to the community. That's not gonna happen when, again, it's in the ether. So I think having a discussion about, you know, do we want to put a committee together, you know, and and and, you know, explore things like location? And and what would the funding sources be and everything like that? I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
So the, the, I, again, something that keeps popping up, Marty, but currently, we just did an RFQ for capital to explore space needs study, and I know the school's looking at studies, and Woodward has been kind of sitting out there milling, so I, I, I worry that putting a committee together might be counterproductive to some of these steps that are already in place in looking at what could happen with Neri, uh, what could potentially happen with Woodward. Um, maybe something to just keep on the radar, depending on where the space need study comes out and where the school, the study committee in in looking at Neri and and possibilities for there.
I hear you. I I disagree with any of that. Um, but 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 simply conveying that to the folks who are doing, going through that process, that that it's something we're interested in, we want to make sure that you consider, so anyway, so it's not, it is, that's my, that's my, my, um, my number two. Uh, I think everybody has an infrastructure priority component to their list, so I think that, uh, the other two are already on, and that's the, um, the the bike, which you already chided me about, and the, uh, the tricentennial. I really think that it is now with twenty twenty-one. We really need to think about, um, twenty twenty-seven.
Absolutely.
Okay, um. The, uh, I think it it it's it's helpful, um, we sort of, it's it's sort of on there already with with, you know, reviewing charges and putting together a roster of the contracts. I just think for the various boards and committees, I I just think that there are some boards and committees that we can just vote out of existence. Um, and I think walking through that process with Town Council, new set of eyes, I think it'd be a, a, a healthy process.
So are you actually volunteering to do that as you put this on your list?
Yeah, I'm fine doing it. Yeah, I'm fine doing it.
We're already in progress.
And, uh, as I find, I keep forgetting to ask, when I was talking to Jay Challen yesterday, his daughter, I guess, has just started law school. I keep forgetting to ask him where she's at law school, so, um, but he and I kind of speak the same language, so it's easy to, uh. Uh, the golf course, I just think, and Mark, you probably know the answer to this, um, but has the, has the, I know we've appointed some new members of the golf course committee. Is 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 the committee itself sort of invigorated? Are they meeting? Are they, do you know one way or the other?
I did make one attempt, uh, to to get the committee up and running, um, when it came to the, uh, the, uh, the construction for the the practice putting green. Um, it was not successful, um, and, uh, and so, but I think that's something that we need to do to get them up and going. There's been a lot of improvements that have been made over there, but, uh, I think there's a lot of other things that that need to be looked at, and especially long term. One of them, which I think we'll talk more about, you know, in subsequent meetings, is gonna be fencing. You know, um, there's fencing that extends only so far along Lata Squama. Do we need to look at more? Um, believe it or not, there's some wayward shots after that first tee that end up in the public safety facility. And some of the, some of the employees park their vehicles accordingly to to take them out of the line of fire in the back of the station. Uh, you know, we've talked about irrigation. We've talked about, we've done a lot of great things over there. I know the management company is very pleased. You know, we're having, I've sent out reports to the board, you know, on, uh, revenue reports that we see from the management company. You know, we're about sixty, sixty to seventy thousand dollars ahead of where we were last year. We thought last year was going to be, you know, the top, the top money making season for a while, so, um.
So keep that going.
All of that.
Yep. Um, uh, but also, um, hearing from the folks on Lata Squama.
Yeah.
And are we doing, are we doing it the right way? I mean, on the one hand, it's clearly a gem. It's more of a gem than I ever would have guessed it was gonna be. And obviously, folks in town, for whatever reason, and surrounding communities, I don't, I'm assuming as well, have really been drawn to the place. Um, and I, I think that it's it's worth, you know, so I asked about the committee, it's really worth our time and effort.
I think.
Uh, but also to make sure, again, we hear from folks from Lata Squama, and make sure that 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 the promises that were made to them about, um, uh, uh, soft footprint is in fact the case and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um.
No, I I agree, Marty. I I think that's an important one, and and now that we do have revolving funds as well, to to start doing some long range funding, I think is very important.
My last one is, so Lisa followed on your conversations, I go with with, um, um, uh, Karen, but also hopefully historical is all of this now, we're settled, um, and Jay can get involved and get them on on the, on a profitable path because that, the, the, um, there have been kernels of very interesting ideas coming out of the Historical Society, this work commission, and also art conversations with, uh, you know, Karen Gallagher and the like about, I don't know, these, these pieces of history in South Row that that that, and again, with Mr. Styver's money, that he's gonna get from the government. The, uh, the, uh, but seriously, it's, it's, it, I just think that 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 doesn't have to necessarily be shovel ready, but thinking about what a a historical walk and how that could would connect in South Row, I think is, I I just is a, is a worthy endeavor. So those are my seven.
So Marty, there's a suggestion on maybe on the the walking part in the history park. I know Karen's gonna come in, um, on the seventeenth, hopefully, and give an update on a lot of different things.
Okay.
We have a whole range of things. Maybe, um, as we look ahead to that too, it might be good to have historical come in and get their thoughts on, you know, what they're looking to do, um, you know, because I think we might have some feedback on on some things. And I think it's a gem for the town.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So I think it'd be a good collaborative effort. So maybe, um, on that one specifically, maybe we could, um, you know, have a discussion in early September. Or we could actually piggyback a little bit, I guess, with with Karen, but I don't know that historical is meeting in August. I know they weren't meeting again until September, so, you know, again, maybe in September, start that conversation again, because I agree with you. I think that's that's important to be done, and there's a lot of interest in it. There's a lot of interest.
And and any attention we can bring to General Henry Marks is fine in my book. Unsummarized.
All right, great, Marty. Thank you. Chelsea?
So, um, I know we've discussed in the last meeting how to move forward with the ARPA funds. So I thought that was important for this board to put on as a goal. I don't know that I need to say anymore about that. Um, Marty touched on ADA already. Um, I think, I think it's a, um, it's a prioritization, and it's also a funding piece. And I think Marty brought up a good point last meeting on, do we actually do a a long term bonding project to check off some of these things? How do we break it out? How do we, uh, you know, I think John Parent needs some time to kind of go through what he can check off. I think, you know, it might make sense for us to have Rec come in and talk to them, because a lot of, um, it was, of it was related to, um, things that they oversee. Um, and then the third piece is continued focus on financial transparency. Um, this was kind of a broader goal, but I think, um, we've made a lot of progress this year with the finance team. Um, I'm very happy with, um, the working relationship between this board and them. I think they've done a great job coming in on a quarterly basis. Um, I have been following the advisory committee meetings, and Mr. Fath actually brought up a good point that we should, that he would like to see us add, um, revolving accounts to our quarterly reports, which we didn't do this year, so I thought that was a good suggestion. I did have a chance to talk to, um, the town accountant about that, and she, um, was on board with that. Um, so I just, I think we still have some more work to do. Um, I also think, um, back to what Mr. Purple just gave us, an update on the budget software and kind of making sure that before October, we have a solid plan on how we're gonna communicate back and forth with this board advisory, et cetera, so. Um, and one other thing that I don't think it's a goal, but I just want to get this committee's board's feeling on it, is bringing an article to town meeting in the hall to change us to a select board. I think we're a little bit behind the eight ball on that one. Um, so I don't think we need to put it as a goal, but I think we can add it to our warrant list.
I did try that, and it didn't go anywhere, but I certainly supported it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, last year.
You know, it's, it's worth a discussion.
Yeah.
I have, I have, I have, some towns have kept it, and and I sort of get the reasons why they've kept it
Okay.
from a historical standpoint. It's at least worth a discussion.
Okay.
So.
All right, that one's easy. We'll put that on in September.
That's gonna be a hard one.
I'll take, I'll, I'll, I'll take, when I take one of Mr. Styvers off.
Didn't realize it was a trade here. Um. Okay, I I'm, I'm pleased that there's a fair amount of overlap here to start with, which is good. I think we're generally moving in similar direction. Uh, I'll follow on to what Marty and Andrew suggested in the sense that, uh, I see several levels here in terms of, uh, you know, value in some shorter term, more attainable things in the short term. But I think that, uh, again, we've got an opportunity over the next several years here with the potential federal funding to think a lot bigger than we have been able to historically. And again, to leverage another point that some combination of, uh, federal money, uh, maybe ability to raise money internally, uh, from wealthy citizens, et cetera, which I'm not sure we've worked hard to tap previously, as well as, uh, with the, with the schools and nonprofits. Um, and I continue to keep the New England Center for Children on the list there, because I think we might be interested in some sort of community focus. Um, I would, I would add, um, to the, um, to my list in terms of, of, uh, community center, et cetera, recreation spaces. I think that you look around at some other towns have in terms of a recreation facility, indoor, um, hockey rink, swimming pool, uh, fitness center kind of stuff, clearly expensive item, but something that, uh, I think in ten, fifteen years is gonna be an important thing for us to have. So you gotta start socializing those ideas, I think, near term and, um, see what we can do with it. I think that, uh, we haven't talked much about, uh, housing here, but I think it's important to keep that on the list in terms of affordable and diverse housing capacity, and we've got some projects going there that I think are very helpful, and I think we ought to keep moving with that fairly high on the radar screen here. Um, infrastructure, I include ADA closure and wastewater capacity, stormwater system. We haven't talked about, but my sense is there are parts of the stormwater system, they're not sufficiently built out or have sufficient capacity. And so again, that to me, the federal bills talk about infrastructure specifically. I think that's a huge opportunity for us. And there are a few gaps in the water system that are useful to close. I could come back to on the open space infrastructure. We've talked about sidewalks, bike paths. I think those are important. I've raised the possibility previously of neighborhood parks. I think there are several that there's one over Maple Crest Pine Cone intersection that uh, people have talked about. It's now an overgrown lot now. I think we could do something there quickly recently.
Can I jump in on that thought just? Um, so that's one of the other things I, I plan to bring forward was there's the five parcels that have been hanging out there that the town has taken. And I think Maple Crest is one of them.
Yeah.
I think there's the opportunity to consider that. I mean, it's a, it's a large neighborhood there.
Yeah.
But I think there's also some that connect to Liberty that have some challenges, but I think Trails might be interested in putting something through there. So.
I've actually looked at the Trails map from some of the complete streets work, and there are some interesting places where we can actually connect neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Town or self property, particularly Liberty area. And I continue to think about the, the proposal for the uh, you know, small neighborhood park and the Liberty playing field area. That's one that you could again, connect to some other neighborhoods on the Southville Road area to dramatically expand the access to something like that. And there are other parcels. I, I was looking through the list of the assessors test that I think you looked at recently, you know, previously, for parcels that we could think about that. And again, you don't do that immediately. You want to talk to the neighborhoods and say, are you interested in this before you think about putting something in there? But I've gotten feedback from the Maple Crest Pine Cone neighborhood that people are very interested in that. And so again, I think those kind of things are, are worth continuing to focus on and we could uh, in some ways, do some of those fairly easily and quickly relative to some of the other projects here. And then the, the ARPA um, thing has been on the list for a while. So again, I, this is in no particular priority order, but I think these are all worthy areas. I think it appears that we've got some interest in many of these from other board members. So I think we've got, again, an opportunity to pick some of these and actually make some progress or begin laying plans. And I think as Marty suggested, not going to happen immediately, but you start to socialize in the ideas. I think it's a lot easier to do versus a, wow, let's do this next month kind of surprises people. So that's my list.
All right. Thank you. Much appreciated. Andrew.
So there's a lot of overlaps. We'll just try to synthesize. Um, again, I'll come back to, I think that like the way Chelsea had a relatively short list and put plan for ARPA first, I, I would also put that first. And Sam, you had it under your bullet five, but I think getting a firm grasp of it. I know you already have a lot of information, understanding about it, but sharing it with the rest of us about, here's how much money is at stake. Here's, if, are there any applicable deadlines that we need to be aware of? What are the criteria to qualify for this? And then starting to put in place a process to really consider whether some of these big um, infrastructure improvements um, goals that we've thought about can be paid for with um, federal money and are, are we, are we, are we losing out, are we possibly losing out on opportunities? You don't want to, we don't act now. So just getting information about the deadlines. I think that's important for me. And um, you know, maybe as something, I'm starting to think of, you know, August, we're just going to have one meeting and then the fall. I mean, it's maybe something for the fall to really um, in a concrete way, um, thinking about what might be um, things that we could do with that. Of course, finishing the things already in process, you know, two really important ones, of course, the downtown initiative, which we talked about every meeting, we're making great progress on. But also um, the IT uh, work that is underway, we just make sure we follow that through and um, make sure we're implementing best practices. One that I would, I think is maybe new, it is a, you know, uh, more um, you know, smaller bore item, but I, I would be willing to take some interest in is, you know, streamlining the process for me, to town boards to implement rules and regulations in a way which is codified, reviewed by town council. And I, I, I think we should also be on the lookout for when the master plan is done. And I think that is something that's on the horizon for the fall, for the, there's going to be at least one or two you know, big picture ideas out of that plan that are things that are really the, the board of selectmen plays a role in helping to effectuate. And uh, so I think we should be on the lookout to do that, because definitely one of the main takeaways of um, the last master plan was just too many goals and you know, not enough action to move forward. Then let's try to help the master plan uh, achieve one or two of the big goals that we can identify as achievable.
Some of those are on this, this list already.
I think um, maybe too many of them are, because there's no way we're going to accomplish that all in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, that's why I think getting a understanding about ARPA, the tick, you know, criteria and deadlines can help us think about what's one or two of those things off the list that we can get done in the next one or two years.
And I pointed out, Wester just actually published their list of ARPA projects, which is pretty interesting in terms of the breadth of things they're doing with that money. So.
I, I would be very interested to hear about it.
I know those cities though got so much money. Yeah, that I, but, but I think if I, if I'm right about, I don't, I agree with you. We should be, we should be, you know, mining, you know, every, every uh, um, you know, uh, you know, potential vein to uh, to, 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 for, this is a once in a forget about generation, once in a millennium. You know, cash infusion for municipalities. Um, it's just interesting right now, this, these, these cities have gotten that money already. I mean, I think, I think Boston got like four hundred billion.
Four hundred billion.
Yeah, it's just unbelievable. So.
So I, I don't know, Chelsea, if, if, if you want to jump in, I know it's not really a goal, but I know Chelsea's been working with, with Carla uh, as we had kind of directed as liaison. And you know, um, you could probably update quickly on where the guidelines are at. I mean, I um, and then, oh.
Yeah. So I don't have a update since our last meeting, because the public comment period closed on Friday. Um, and I, I don't, I don't know that she's, she may have heard something this week. I did not check in with her prior to this meeting. Um, but I could definitely get an update and uh, we can circulate it out.
Yeah. And then we can start planning ahead. So um, Andrew, did that cover all of yours?
Yeah, again, I was trying to kind of synthesize of uh, pull out ideas that I think everyone had and think about ways we could move forward with them.
And I think uh, you know, as far as even like ARPA goes, I, I think strategizing on once, even maybe before the guidelines are set is, is, you know, having a discussion on what we think. And maybe, I know we put feel route. I know you and family services had kind of given us this. Maybe we reiterate and we put it out again for uh, department heads or whomever that maybe haven't had an opportunity to get together and meet and respond. So I, I think we continue to do that. And you know, we, we take a look at what's out there and then, I'm sure we, I needed myself, sorry. Um, I'm sure we all have some lists. I know Mr. Stivers does. And um, you know, um, I'm sure we're all thinking about things, Sam, as well. So that we'd like to see on there. And I think, I think some of the goals in here kind of reiterate that, I think, where we're all thinking ahead as to the best way to be able to utilize. I know um, you know, Carolyn Dykum is looking for, there's other monies that are out there as well. And we had talked about that at our last meeting as well. So I think, I think there's great opportunity and we should probably have a, a much larger discussion on that piece sooner rather than later and thinking ahead. So.
How do we move forward with this? Do we synthesize, synthesize all of these individual lists into the, add to the grid that Marty is putting together to, at least for discussion purposes for it all out there?
Sam, where did you make it to me yet? Are you going to skip me having an opportunity?
All I was going to say is, is this is, this is kind of where we were last year. Um, and um, then I sat down and um, you know, sort of combined some stuff. And again, I'm happy to do it again. Um, and um, I remember the first list, there were some things that folks said, well, no, that I, you know, you synthesized it too much. And I'd like that back in. But I, 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 you know, it's going to be a little bit longer than last time, but I think it'll probably be about a page and a half.
Yeah.
Um, as opposed to a page um, that I was able to get it down to last year. Um, um, and I'm sure I'll leave a, you know, a thing or two out, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to give it a go.
Okay.
So.
So Lisa, you were going to talk about your list.
Thank you, Sam. I appreciate it. Um, so um, I knew a lot of the focus was going to be on the financial and the ARPA piece. So I tried to kind of go in a different direction. And um, I think one of the things, and I know it is on the list, I think it was on my list from prior, was um, I think we really need to take a, a great look at um, providing training and resources to our volunteers on open meeting law. Um, I think Zoom has, has opened a lot of eyes to a lot of things. Um, and again, I don't think anybody is, is potentially doing anything and intending anything, but I think um, you know, we, we all, we appoint boards and committees. One of the things that I, we've kind of talked about over the last couple of years that I've been on the board is maybe it's a mandatory requirement twice a year. Jim is great about providing trainings and bringing people in. And maybe we'll make it a mandatory um, step of some of the new people we're appointing, you know? I mean, they're going on a committee and they're, they're, they're not understanding what um, you know, what open meeting law and agenda and some of those topics are. So I think I, I would really like to focus on some of that. I, I view that as investing in our volunteers and setting them up to excel and succeed. So that's one, one of the important things. And I know, and as an example, um, I think it was my first year, maybe my second year on the board, Aldo actually did a training with, he met with ZBA Planning Board and Concom separately. They talked about open meeting law. They talked about authority. He answered questions for them. He did it on a Saturday. It was great. It was great participation. And then the goal was to kind of bring everybody together. And unfortunately, it takes time to have these and then trying to get schedules. You were at the holidays before you knew it. So, but again, I think um, I think the, the firm that we've chosen has given us some great opportunities as well. And I think um, Adam Costa has been fabulous. We know from the downtown initiative. So I think he might be able to bring some value. So I'd, I'd like to have a little bit of focus on that. My second one is kind of what's, what's happening now. Um, is kind of Route Nine. That's kind of like the one step, but I thought it should be on there. Uh, my third one is I'd like to um, consider instituting some type of yearly survey. Maybe, you know, everybody gets a survey and they drop it off in a box. It's, it's, it's anonymous, but at the same time, it kind of gives us a, 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 a feel of what's going on. Sometimes we don't find about, find out about things going on until it's too late. You know, I view this as an opportunity to be able to maybe head things off of the past, keep morale up, you know, in places where it's down. So that's just something for the board to consider. Um, we, we have tried very hard and Marty reinstituted bringing back boards and committees. I think it's, it's important to keep a pulse on. That's part of the reason for the liaison. But we can't always get everybody in here. So I think it might be nice to get even a one, one written page of kind of what's going on with everybody. And I also, one of the things I found was so useful with our volunteer breakfast, was seeing the people networking. There was no working in silos going on. It was Trails networking with council and aging that, hey, maybe we could do something together. And, and again, I think there's great value in that. And I think it also increases interest and maybe some of the vacancy spots we have as well. So um, you know, maybe putting together, breaking into groups that, like again, council and aging, just a brief, could be a Zoom meeting, an hour meeting, just kind of bringing everybody together, finding out what everybody's working on that maybe. Go ahead, Marty.
I was just going to ask, I mean, oh, is it, 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 it sounds like what you might be um, um, thinking about is, and I think it'd be a great idea, is like, is like a, a, a one-page document that we could send all the committees.
Yeah.
That basically said any new um, for instance, rules and regs that you're considering for the year. Um, you know, um, you know, what are you, have you identified, you know, ask them, not identify your top three goals or five goals, whatever, for the year. Any issues that we, that you wish to raise either with um, the board of selectmen and or town council. Just something, I mean, that would be, get that. And then, because again, we tried to meet with as many
I know.
Um, committees as possible last year. And you know, you do, you run out of time. You do, you run out of time. But I, I think the idea of a written sheet is a great idea.
And again, it's just, so again, I was taking it a step further. And I have one other thing I forgot to add that I think is, is, I'm going to be beating a dead horse with Mr. Purple on this one. If anybody um, has, uh, would like to take their life in their own hands, I would recommend you take a walk in the basement. It's the basement here. To see the paper, there are school committee meetings. This is something that I, I am going to push hard over the next couple of years is that there are minutes from like the seventies down there from school committee. In this age of, of technology and the cloud, I mean, it's crazy to me. And I know Jim has been working on, in some cases, you know, doing some things already down there. He's got some of the kids scanning things, but I think maybe we could think about it. Maybe I'll throw it in for ARPA, Sam. Bad little money that, that, you know, we actually bring in a firm that can set something up and just scan and just, it's crazy to, I mean, I'm, it's almost claustrophobic. It makes me OCD to go down there. I'll be honest. I am like, I can't even. There's just, yeah. Sorry.
Can't poke you. I can't wave. Um, no. So one of the things that I, I want to attribute it to um, to Mrs. Hale, um, with our first community compact, um, we took a look at all of our records. We took a look at the basement. Um, we horrified some consultants. Um, but the, the, the thing that we came away with was the plan on how to address these things. The problem was, is we could not spend any money on implementing anything from the plan. It was for the plan. And you know, we had actually, I believe that was in the budget the year we did the plan, maybe the year after, to try to put some money aside to begin the um, the scanning, to begin the digitization, digitalization of, of the, of all these records so that we could dispose of some of these. And we just haven't found the ability to, to do that. But we do have a plan. Uh, we do have something that we could, that, that we could look to build on, to handle some of those records, because um, it is, it's, it's, you've got, you've got records, you know, from the eighteen hundreds that are probably sitting less than six inches off the floor of a building that routinely, um, especially with all these rains and happening, you know, that you find water down there. You know, so we, we, we either need to let the water in or we need to do something about it um, so that we can, you know, make sure that this stuff doesn't uh, doesn't get lost.
Yeah. So this, there's at least two big categories of, of, of records. I mean, Jim has talked to me. It's kind of funny that he found something with John Hancock signature on it. We're all excited. So all excited about that. Um, and uh, but he also found documentation about the, 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 the founding of South Row. But so anyway, those are in a special category. And um, they're not ripe for the second category, which I know there's a cost to it, but it would get them out of the basement. Even in the short term, just getting them to Iron Mountain. In other words, is there a reason that we can't take records from the, the nineteen forties, fifty, sixty, stuff that really, for the most part, doesn't have historical significance, even though it might have, you know, public record significant, just send it to Iron Mountain? I mean, I don't know. Again, that, that's where all our records are. Um, aren't they right in Marlboro? Isn't that where Iron Mountain is? Yeah. So a short trip.
I, I think, uh, sorry.
I think one of the things, um, and again, you know, we, we've looked at a couple of things over the years. Um, the old station two, fire department, you know, we still own that building. Um, I've had conversations with John Parent about, you know, making that a permanent records repository for the files that we need to keep. Um, and having at least some climate controlled in there. You know, I, and, and to pile on to what Lisa had said earlier, I think Marty took, uh, to um, um, the discussion you had about senior center. Some of these items may be domino effect, depending on what the subcommittee with capital and school is looking at for space.
Yeah.
Um, and um, again, to your point, if it stays in the ether, nothing happens. So I think they need to be part of the discussions, you know, as to, um, as to what we need to do. But again, there's been conversations about, about these things. And um, uh, I think they just need to be put into the context of the, of the processes that are in place to look at them now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add, I, I agree.
There's been a lot of discussion, but it, it's behooves us at this point to actually take action on this. Let's quit talking about it. It, it, it's time to give Mark, whomever, the tools. You know, if it's a town meeting warrant article, I am happy to stand up. And I will tell you what, talk about doing a video of walking down there. Some of the ceilings, thank God I'm short. I didn't have to duck.
thank God I'm short, I didn't have to duck, but others, it's, it's just unlike anything I've ever seen. And I think it's, it, it's so inefficient of a way to do things. So. Yeah. So again, it's, it's giving the tools. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and Vanessa and Mark have a step in place, but let's just act. If, I think that's so important, because if there is ever a fire in this building, I mean, I can't even imagine. And again, school committee meeting minutes from nineteen seventy-eight, file cabinets, it just, again, OCD. It makes me crazy. So I would just like to put that on the list and, and that's, that would be towards the top of the priority of one of mine. So I think Mr. Stiber's ARPA would be a good resource.
I would point out that we actually have five hundred thousand dollars in the bank now to Martin. Second, just as a placeholder, you've mentioned the town employee survey. I'd suggest that the MPC, I thought did a great job for their town wide, wide survey. They've got a structure in place. But I have to believe they could put something together very quickly for, for you and that distributed fairly easily. So it'd be a good conversation to have.
Good idea. Thank you, Sam. All right. So that's, that is it for my list. I, I think, you know.
It's up to Marty.
Now it's up to Marty.
Give me a couple of weeks. It'll take a couple of weeks to incorporate.
Make sure you do before you go away. No, I'm kidding. I'm joking, Marty.
At least five weeks from today. So I've got time.
So that being said, thank you all for, for getting your, your goals in, getting this done. I can't believe we're at item seven and it's only nine. That being said, really, do I? All right. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.